The meeting is being recorded.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm now calling the Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, regular meeting of Los Altos Hills County Fire District Order. The time is 7:03 PM. Please note that in support of physical distancing, the local public health emergency and accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order that relaxed Brown Act rules during the public health crisis, we are conducting the meeting via teleconference. So because we are video conferencing, we will follow a strict protocol for the benefit of the recording. I will indicate when commissioners, staff, and the public will provide comments. If you have called into the meeting and are not using a webcam, please state your name prior to providing your comment for the benefit of the recording. If any participants who is participate presenting during the meeting would like to leave prior to the end of the meeting, please state your name and announce that you are leaving for the benefit of the recording. Please practice consider it video conferencing etiquette by muting your line when you're not speaking and limiting distracted behavior on the camera. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. Commissioners, I will be conducting all roll call this evening in the same order. Please remember the order so that you are prepared to provide your comment or vote. President Warren.
Here.
Vice President Vaughn.
Present.
Commissioner Tyson.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Spreen.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
She's muted.
Muted.
She has to unmute.
Commissioner Carr.
Got it. Okay, I'm here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Kearney.
Here.
Okay, all commissioners are present. Now, for the benefit of the recording, I will also conduct a roll call. Assistant Fire Chief Glass.
Who's dog?
Is Assistant Fire Chief Glass present?
He was.
Okay.
Probably went to go get his dog.
Deputy Chief Lenny.
So as the record show, that Chief Glass has left the meeting at the moment.
Is Deputy Chief Lenny present?
Here.
Good, thank you. Emergency Services Manager Gluhann.
Present.
General Manager Logan.
Here.
District Louisville Counsel Seagull.
Present.
Special Project Service Consultant Henricks.
Present.
Okay, presenters with the exception of Chief Class and staff are accounted for.
And I'm back. Sorry about that.
All right, well then, all presenters and staff are accounted for. Thank you. Back to you, President Warren.
Okay. All right, so one piece of feedback, we gotta adjust the Zoom next time. Every time I hit mute or unmute on my line, it keeps, I get the, you know, the voice telling me it's muted or unmuted. So it's pretty annoying. All right, so, public comment. Persons, item number two, person wishing to address the district on any subject, whether or not on the agenda, may do so now. Please note, however, the district is not able to undertake extended discussions or act tonight on items not on the agenda. Items may be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on the next available agenda. Please note that while the district board will hear comments upon items which are on the agenda at this time, the district will not act on any such item until the item is under consideration by the district. District policy is to limit public testimony to three minutes per speaker. Do we have any public comments on items on or not on the agenda? Hearing none. We will now move on to item three, which is the President's remarks. All right, so, welcome everyone. I was thinking about, you know, the fact that this is now the fourth time we've done this. And, you know, I think I said this last time, I would have been stunned if you told me we were gonna do it three times. So I think this is now, now the normal. This is now how we operate for the time being. And once again, I mean, I think we have to just, you know, kudos to the staff for how far we've come in such a short period of time. You know, we tried, we started this in March, we didn't even have a phone line. And now we are to a state that we have, you know, we're all on Zoom, we can all see each other. We have the backgrounds, which is, you know, we've come quite, quite a, you know, long way in a short period of time. So thank you to the staff for making that happen. And then just looking at the agenda for tonight, I think once again, it's a testament to how much this organization, both commissioners and staff, are moving forward to get done. We have an update on the management audit, we have an update on the budget. I'm really excited about the update on the shaded fuel break because to me, that is, you know, just really symbolic of the good work that this organization has been doing and will continue to do for the public safety. Updates on the, you know, home inspection zone or home ignition zone, work that we've now figured out how to be in compliance with the rules and to move that forward for the benefit of the community, how we've managed to figure out how to get the cert, keep the cert program invigorated and keep it moving forward. And then, you know, in looking towards the future, you know, on the strategic plan. So, you know, a broad range of topics on the agenda. And so I think it's, you know, just a testament to all the hard work that's going on in this, in the difficult times. So once again, thank you to the staff. And so we'll now move on to item four, which is adoption of Resolution 20-18, Resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District to proceed with abatement of brush. So, item four, a public hearing. Before we proceed with the public hearing, Deputy Chief Lenny, please provide a quick overview of the abatement process.
Good morning, everyone, or good evening, everyone. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Julie Lenny and I'm a deputy chief with Santa Clara County Fire Department. I'm here tonight to tell you a little bit about our defensible space program, the steps that we take and why I'm here. As many of you know, Santa Clara County Fire Department conducts courtesy defensible space inspections in the town of Los Altos Hills on an annual basis. These property inspections are conducted to ensure compliance with the Town of Los Altos Hills Municipal Code, Section 4-2.116, titled Brush and Vegetative Growth: Clearance from Structures and Roadways. Each February, we send out letters to property owners highlighting the importance of creating and maintaining a defensible space around structures. If done properly, it will increase the chances of their home surviving a wildfire. In this letter, we also provide them with the Town of Los Altos Hills Municipal Code requirements. Starting April 1st of each year, our engine crews go out and conduct property inspections to ensure that defensible space is being maintained and that they are adhering to code requirements. While inspecting, if the crews come across a property that is noncompliant, a door hanger is left indicating what they need to do to bring the property into compliance. After some time has passed, a reinspection is conducted. And if the property is still noncompliant, they are placed on a list and brought before you, the Town of Los Altos Hills County Fire District. I'm on this call tonight to let you know that there are two properties that do not meet the Town of Los Altos Hills Municipal Code requirements. I originally had a list of four, but two have since complied. I'm here and available to answer any questions that you may have.
Mark, you're muted.
Hi, Julie.
Yes.
Duffy, here. Which of the properties, I have four on my list, could you give the addresses of those that have not complied?
Sure. The first address is 26313 Prisma Road. And the second is 12725 La Cresta Drive. The other two on Lomboranka and on Bird Avenue have complied.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful.
All right. Sarah, you actually can unmute people. So if you've got someone starts talking that they don't realize they're muted, you as the host can unmute them.
I've tried doing that and it's not working. So, thank you though. I'll keep trying.
All right, thank you to Deputy Chief Lenny. We will now open the public hearing. The time is 7:13 PM. Please note that if any members of the public would like to contest the inclusion of their name or parcel number in Exhibit A of Resolution 20-18, a resolution of the Board of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District to proceed with abatement of brush, now is the time to do so. Are there any comments from the public? All right, hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. The time is 7:14 PM. Resolution 20-18, Resolution of Los Altos Hills County Fire District to proceed with abatement of brush. We'll move on to item 4B, which is Resolution 20-18, Resolution of Los Altos Hills County Fire District to proceed with abatement of brush. There are, are there any clarification questions from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson.
Well, one general question, and I meant to ask it a little earlier, and that was, what's the best process to use if we're walking and we notice a big collection of accumulation of brush on a property?
You can certainly call our office and we'll open up a complaint. And then I will send a deputy fire marshal out to take a look at that. And then depending on the time of year and how we can process that, I usually will contact Mo Kumri of the Hazvege from county. And if we can't gain compliance, we will then turn it over to him and have his assistance. But again, if it's on the, if it's on the program list, then during the time that we do brush inspections, it'll be a little bit easier to bring it before you if it's noncompliant.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Price?
No question.
All right, Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
Just one question. We have an official definition of public nuisance. The brush being a public nuisance.
Chief Lenny, did you hear the question?
I just heard that she had a definition, but I didn't hear a question.
Well, I think the question is, do we have a definition of what the, what a public nuisance is?
I think that typically comes from your board that says, defines that weeds are a public nuisance and that's why you have a resolution to abate those weeds.
Yeah.
So, to answer your, Janice, does that answer your question? Or do you would you like to get the staff to provide that to you?
Well, I don't think I know any more than I did before I asked.
All right, so Jay, would you take for action to provide Commissioner Carr with the definition of what the nuisance is?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Janice?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Kearney?
No questions.
All right, thank you. I will now entertain a motion. While the commission is making the motion and the commissioner is seconding the motion, please state your name for the benefit of the recording. All right, I need someone to make a motion.
I'll move, and my name is Tyson, and I move adoption of the resolution.
Duffy, seconds. Duffy Price, seconds.
All right. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
All right, are there any additional public comments on the item? All right, no comments from the public. If there are no further discussion, we will now vote on the resolution. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Chief Lenny, will you be leaving the call at this time?
I will stay on for just a little longer, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to item five, Essential Government Function Update. Item 5A, Santa Clara County Public Health Order. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would like to say that the essential governmental order that was passed by this commission on March 17th is still standing and in place and serving us well. A new health order was issued by the county health department on June 5th, and that built on the May 4th and the May 22nd orders. So what June 5th order did was announce amendments to the local shelter in place order and allows for multiple sectors and activities to resume. The June 5th order expands previously permitted business activities to include outdoor dining at restaurants and in-store shopping at retail locations. It permits all children to take part in childcare, summer camp, summer school, or upper educational and recreation programs so long as groups are limited to 12 or less. It allows outdoor gatherings for up to 25 people for religious services and cultural ceremonies, allows outdoor recreational activities that do not involve physical contact, such as swimming, to resume, and permits car-based gatherings and includes drive-in theaters. Further relaxation of the county health order officer, Dr. Sarah Cody, is expected until the effects of this step are analyzed by the data. It's noticed that an uptick in hospitalizations and new cases of COVID-19 have been reported in the county. Construction sites particularly experienced cases of COVID-19 and limited construction or shut down construction in response. The health department is working with surrounding counties for a regional approach to ensure decisions are data-driven, take steps that are measured and carefully, and to allow sufficient time before significant changes. The Town of Los Altos Hills experienced a pop-up COVID-19 test site last week with excellent results. And testing occurred at the pop-up site today in the city of Los Altos. I might just mention that commissioners attended the pop-up session last week, and perhaps they would want to say a few words about that. I know Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Tyson were two that attended and perhaps others did also.
Yeah. I'll go ahead. I was there from 9:30 to 4:30. It was just the most remarkable thing. I was checking people in. And the thing that was remarkable to me was the way people heard about it came from all different areas, from their neighbors, from their friends. It really created a sense of community, but they heard from next door, they got emails from Supervisor Semidion, emails from the town, Instagram, just so many different ways. And I was really pleased to be involved with something that showed that Los Altos Hills was an area that took responsibility for helping the whole broader community. And people coming from Sunnyvale, Mountain View, Palo Alto, they're welcome. And I was, I was proud to be part of that effort.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson? Excuse me, Vice President Vaughn?
Yes, I heard about it through Duffy, through email, and it was great. I, when I got there, I ran into George and George checked me in. And I thought the process went real smooth and it was pretty painless. And so that was, that was good. Haven't got results back yet, but, so that's a good thing. So, yeah, thanks.
George, how many people do you think?
Around 427, something like that. I tell you, we got to where even at the very end, this mother appeared with four kids. She, she was desperate to get them into camp. And we just said, come on, come in. Until we run out of tests, we'll take you, even if we go over. We did.
Great job. Good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. That ends my remarks on this topic.
Thank you very much. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn? Alvin, you're on mute?
On mute, yeah.
No comments.
Commissioner Tyson?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Commissioner Price?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Spreen?
No comment, thanks.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right, and George, I wanted to thank you for manning the booth, or manning the pop-up for, you know, your entire Friday. It seems like you were there the entire day.
My other meetings got canceled. I was, I was glad to. I tell you, it was a perfect job for me. I really think so.
And Roger and George, you know, let the town staff know how professional and accommodating they were and how they just turned to and made it happen in such a short period of time.
If I may interrupt you, let's not ignore the role of Roger. Roger was there for many hours inside helping people as well.
Okay.
Oh, really? Excellent.
And the one thing I'll say for those who haven't been tested is, even with a lot of little kids coming through, there was not one comment of discomfort, not a cry, not a yelp, not a ouch, nothing, even with, down to two years old. So I encourage everyone to attend one of these that they want. There's really nothing to be worried about.
All right. All right, thank you. We'll now move on to item six, Commission Ad-Hoc Management Audit Subcommittee Update. All right, item 6A, Santa Clara County Management Audit Division Audit Report and District Response to the Audit Report Released to the Public on May 22nd. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The management audit report with the audit recommendations and the district response was released to the public on May 22nd. The link to the county website with the management audit report is on the district website homepage under the section titled Important Bulletins. On the linked page is a summary with key points. The report is very long and detailed. The management report is one step in a much longer process of review. The first review is currently scheduled for June 25th at 9:30 AM with the County Finance, Government, and Operations Committee. These meetings are held via Zoom. The next step, the report will be agendized for the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. The district ad hoc commissioners who shepherd this initial process to this point will continue to work through the completion of the next two meetings to achieve resolution of the process. There are not any other details known or to report at this time. The commission meetings and agendas will continue with updates. And the next commission meetings are scheduled on July 28th, August 18th, if there is a meeting held, and September 15th. The ad hoc audit team will be looking for positive solutions as we proceed through the meetings with various county committees and with the Board of Supervisors. And this completes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. All right, is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No comments.
Commissioner Tyson?
No comments.
Commissioner Price? Duffy, any comments? You're on mute, Duffy. Duffy, you're on mute. Duffy? You're on mute.
You want to skip right back?
All right, Duffy, you're on mute. All right, well, that's just sort of back to Duffy. Commissioner Spreen? Okay, now, now you got it. Okay.
Okay, sorry. Let me ask you this. Since we're meeting as ad hoc, and this is just a general question, we normally receive compensation for a number of meetings for the commission. Are we being compensated for this ad hoc participation? Just a question.
I would, District Clerk Vargas, you have to confirm? Yes. District Clerk Vargas is signaling yes.
She did? Okay, just curious if we should be logging that in. I haven't done that, so I need to do it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Duffy.
Muting.
All right, Commissioner Spreen?
I'll only add that as someone who knows nothing other than what has been put out publicly that I applaud the ad hoc subcommittee for an amazing job. I think the response pages in the report are, speak for themselves and are just stunning. And I, it's a, the effort that went into that definitely shows. So thank you to all those who've been involved. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney?
No comment.
Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. We'll now move on to item seven, Santa Clara County Fire Chief Report. Item 7A, Monthly Report for May 2020. Assistant Chief Glass, please provide the report.
Good evening, commissioners and member of staff. I, let's, if we can start on the first page, I got some stuff to cover there, please.
I'll save you just a second to load that. Sorry, I didn't think of that page.
No problem. I can talk through it. It's not a big deal. Be basically up to report that we did have a structural fire on Mora Drive, which was on the 21st of the month. And it did result in approximately $750,000 worth of fire damage and loss. The very good thing was that there were no loss of life and no injuries. The crews arrived on scene within the normal response time. They established incident command and a quick knockdown of the fire and limited the spread and growth to just the first two rooms. I believe it was the kitchen and the front living room area. They were able to do salvage and overhaul in the bedrooms. The fire is still technically under investigation. I can share with you, however, there was a chicken raising operation going on in the living room with the use of some type of heating lamps. We believe this was in a response to the meat shortage as a result of COVID-19. The individuals were, were growing or farming chickens in their living room, which is obviously not something that we recommend. So, while the fire is still under investigation, I'll leave that information with, with the commissioners. The second fire that we had was a barbecue pit that spiraled out of control, did present a threat to the structure. That resulted in the loss of the barbecue crews arrived at scene and controlled it with one, one engine and one attack line. No spread to the structure, no injuries. So we do report $750,250 of property dollar loss due to fire for the month of May. We can scroll down to page, page two now. Thank you. We're a little off our incident count. We're trailing behind about 100 calls so far where we normally would be. This is directly attributed to the COVID-19 and shelter in place order. We've seen a dramatic decrease in call volume across the entire district and throughout the county of Santa Clara. So we did see during the month of May approximately 17% reduction in call volume system-wide. And here you can see that we were a little bit off pace. We're about 100 calls behind from where we should be for the month of May compared to last year. We expect that to pick back up and to be back within our normal range as the shelter in place orders have been lifted. However, there is some talk of possible increasing the restrictions as we move forward with the next health order, as we've seen a recent spike in the COVID-19 outbreak. As for call volume, we benefited a lot during the month of May due to reduced traffic flow on our freeway systems. Engine crews were able to move throughout the Town of Los Altos Hills much more quickly. We are seeing the average response time, four minutes and 34 seconds for Engine 76, Engine 75, which does a lot of fill into the hills, seven minutes and six seconds. And then, of course, Rescue 74, seven minutes, 36 seconds. We did report six late calls, and two of those were in El Manias area. They were due to calls in the Page Mill 280 area. We typically struggle with reaching that area just from the sheer distance in which it takes to travel from the fire station to that location. Then we often suffer from misinformation or, you know, good intent but wrong location reports in the 911 system. People believe they're at 280 in Alpine, when they're actually at 280 in Page Mill, or they believe they're at 280 in El Mani, and they're actually at Magdalena. So we end up driving up and down the freeway. And of course, our crews don't report at scene until they actually arrive at the found incident. But call, but response times overall look very well, five minutes, 53 seconds, and six minutes, 42 seconds for the rural density. As I reported, the incident count, $750,250 for total of two incidents. We did have two community events that were scheduled. They were canceled due to shelter in place order. And then you can see the overall call break. And then you can see the overall call breakdown on the pie chart. And like I said, we're, we're slightly off the, off the pace of where we were a year ago. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer, answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Assistant Chief Glass. And we'll just go, we'll go through the, uh, the roll call, get it knocked out. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
Yeah, Chief, I just want a quick question. Um, do you know if Red Cross was called for the, uh, the displaced residents, uh, on the Mora call?
You know what? Let me, I have that information and I need to try to get out of this full screen, um, view. I do believe I read that, that Red Cross was notified, um, and did take into the care, uh, two adults and two juveniles who were residents of that home.
Gotcha. Yeah, they were, uh, friends of mine actually, so, yeah. Great, thank you, Chief.
Yeah, yeah. And again, uh, like I said, we're, we're still investigating it, but we, we have a strong hunch that there might have been an issue with that, that chicken operation that was going on in the living room.
Yeah, she mentioned that, so, okay. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Tyson?
Uh, no comments other than Chief, but when you say that things are off, but they're actually lower, I think that's good.
Yeah, yeah, that, that is a very good way to look at it from a commissioner's standpoint, as well as from a fire service administrator. You know, anytime we're not responding to calls, that means people aren't suffering within our community. So, so yes, that is the absolute silver lining. Uh, but again, as we look at it from the fire service, we are here to provide that service. So anytime we see a decrease in our ability to provide that service, it's, it's a give-take. Absolutely is perspective.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Price?
Yes, I have, uh, one comment, uh, and thank you very much for letting us know that Red Cross was notified or you think that it was notified because the question, last town council meeting came up about donating to nonprofits. And it just occurred to me that there was a, uh, very robust discussion about not using taxpayer funds for nonprofits. And George, you've been the recipient of a couple of comments about that recently. But I think this is a typical example. We often don't realize that something like the Red Cross is available as a resource to the town when needed. And I think that's important and maybe George or Roger can carry that forward back to the council if we have any future discussions about whether or not to donate any kind of taxpayer funds. Thank you. That's my comment.
Thank you Duffy. Commissioner Sreen?
No comments, thank you.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Kearney?
Yeah, two questions, Chief. One is, uh, incident count by types is six incidents and you list two significant incidents. Are the other four insignificant or not be concerned about those?
Let me take a look at, uh, what you're looking at there. Um, I have it in, in front of me. So, incident count, where, where did you see the six at, Commissioner?
Uh, so third line down, EMS, service, fire, middle column, six. Man, I, I don't know. Maybe I'm reading that wrong. So on sec, page two?
Yeah.
2020 incident snapshot?
Yeah. Oh, fire, six. Yes, understood. So yes, they were insignificant fires. That is correct. Um, if you refer to the map down below, you can see the red dots on the map. That's on page three. That shows you where the six fires were. Um, we had a report of smoke, um, up at Foothills Park, which comes in as an outside smoke investigation. That represents one. Uh, we had a power line down. We had a rubbish fire. They're all small insignificant fires that do not, um, meet the threshold, uh, to be significant. Uh, so we did, we do go to a lot of fires that are extinguished or fires that are small in nature. We did have a vegetation fire that didn't extend past 10 by 10. So there's, there's fires that we're going to or other incidents, but, uh, in an effort to save the, the commission's time, we kind of weed out the ones that don't really rate.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Um, the second is, um, so the Red Cross issue. So I'm a member of the disaster management team for Red Cross for the Santa Clara, Santa, um, Silicon Valley.
Uh, um, uh, Red Cross.
And I'm a, I'm a lead of, uh, the DAT, um, Disaster Action Team Response, the guys who go out to those fires. So I'm unaware that, um, DAT was called. And so that's one of the things, I, I'd be happy to take that offline, um, Mr. President. Uh, but I, I would like to follow up on how, because we, we do a lot of fires with, uh, um, we, the Red Cross, do a lot of fire response with, um, San Jose Fire, obviously. Um, less so with County Fire, but I would like to sort of work through the issues of, of how, um, you folks alert Red Cross and particularly in the COVID environment, Red Cross is, um, we're, struggle a little bit with how we verify evacuees, um, their identity, their place of residence and damage to the structure. Typically what we do now in this environment, we rely on, um, fire to provide or EMS to provide that information to us. And we have a pretty good relationship with, uh, San Jose Fire to make that happen. So if you could, if you could, um, ma- maybe I could follow up with you offline? I don't know that that's strictly speaking, uh, a, um, a commission issue, Mr. President.
I don't know if it is, but the coordination is always good.
Mr. President, if I, if I might be able to just respond to that.
Yeah.
So, um, in, while I was sitting here, uh, working through it, I did pull up the incident report from the fire captain and the incident commander, who was one of our battalion chiefs assigned to Battalion 74, uh, by Chief Stokcik, many of you know her. Um, so in her narrative, she writes that the public information officer responded to the incident to provide a summary to the media. The board of company was notified and responded to secure the residents. And the residents were offered but did not need Red Cross services. So typically, uh, that would probably explain why you weren't notified, Commissioner, uh, in your other role on the Red Cross. And, uh, to, uh, to Commissioner Vaughn's point, he probably could follow up with his friends to, to confirm that. But, uh, our system typically is that the first duty company officer or battalion chief that arrives at scene is the incident commander. Uh, it is part of their standard checklist that they go through as part of the, what we call kind of wrapping up the incident where we secure the, the burnt structure, making sure that it's safe before we turn it back over to the homeowner. Uh, we provide the media summary. We make notifications to the general manager, which I, I was actually the duty chief for this fire. I texted, um, General Manager Logan that morning to advise her that we had a fire within the district. And, uh, we also typically offer the residents, uh, notification to Red Cross services. And we notify that through our dispatch center. Our incident commander would make a notification for our dispatch center to contact the Red Cross. And then they are the ones that then get the information and place the resident in contact with the Red Cross if they're to respond out. The Red Cross would respond out and check in with our incident commander at that time and be, you know, introduced to the person who's suffered the loss. So again, I'm happy to, to take this offline and follow up with you, Commissioner Kearney.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, Chief. I mean, I, so it's, it's, the, the principal issue is what you just described is residents contacting Red Cross. So we don't, um, and Neil Katon, who is online, is dispatcher for Red Cross for the, for the Disaster Action Group as well. So, um, why don't I, I'll, I'll give you a shout, um, on behalf of the Red Cross or Neil, and I can give you a shout. We can work through that because I think it might be useful for someone from the Red Cross, um, to, uh, maybe meet with battalion chiefs and just make sure that, you know, you folks know what the Red Cross needs, um, if and when a resident does need our help.
Yeah.
Because in a COVID environment, it's a little bit complicated there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll connect you with our operations captain who manages the, uh, that call-out binder with the dispatch center. And then again, we have a monthly operations meeting with all the battalion chiefs where we could schedule you a, a Zoom, Zoom opportunity to come in and talk about the benefits of Red Cross. We have done that in the past. So, yeah, we're happy to vet our system and if it's, if it's not, uh, meeting the needs, then we'll definitely, uh, adapt and, and adjust to that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none. All right, uh, we'll now move on to item eight, General Manager Update. Then our item eight A, Events and Activities, eight B, OK Resource Sign for Residents, and eight C, Revision to the District Website. General Manager Logan, please provide with the update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, before you, uh, are the general, General Managers' report slides. And you can see the cover page. Oh, Sarah, go back to the cover page. It's so nice. There you go. Uh, these are, this is a depiction of the various updates that were done. Uh, some of the pages were, were fairly major reworks and others were just slight tweaks. But it gives you kind of an overview of how nicely the, this last month of work went. And, uh, kudos to Sarah Hendrick for shepherding this through. Very nicely done. Okay, uh, second pa- or first page. Listing of the events and activities taking place. And even though we're going, doing business by Zoom or teleconferencing, a lot of activity is still occurring. Uh, every week, uh, retired fire captain Gluhan, myself, Sarah Hendrick, attend the weekly county EIO officers briefing. That's a 30-minute briefing and we get the status of the county at that point in time, the events that are going on. Mainly have centered in the areas of COVID-19, the health order, uh, fire issues that are occurring, fire protection and defense, and then also, uh, the public, uh, discord that has occurred in the last couple of weeks. Emergency Services Manager Gluhan hosts the Los Altos Hills CERT and ECC Committee Check-ins every Wednesday night. Moving down the list, the staff attended three Fire Safe Council Strategic Planning Sessions via Zoom video conferencing, and that was with our partner, Fire Safe Council. And then moving down again, um, there was, we attended two PG&E, PSPS webinars. One was for agencies, the other was for the public, and I think that was very well attended and a lot of good information went on. And then there's the, we attend the monthly Emergency Communications Committee meeting. And I was fortunate enough last week, at the end of the week, to visit the shaded fuel break construction and see what had gone on there. And then also attended the Emergency Managers Association Meeting and, um, attended part of the FARA Board Meeting, which is our risk pool, insurance provider. So those are events and activities. Uh, any questions on that or should I move to the next slide? Okay, next slide. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk about the revisions to the district website since she's pretty familiar with what all that occurred here. So Sarah, can you take this, these couple of slides coming up?
Yes, thank you, General Manager Logan. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, so as Jay mentioned, we've had a few revisions to the website over the past few weeks. Uh, thanks to some suggestions from residents and commissioners, we've made some updates to the brush chipping pages to reflect the current processes and to give residents a better idea of what to expect when they're actually registering for this service. The program page, which is the first one linked on this slide, discusses the purpose of the program, how it works and how to sign up for the service. It also provides a tentative brush chipping schedule for 2020 through December of this year so that residents can anticipate when their program area will receive the service. Uh, that schedule also includes when they can expect mailers, when, uh, the deadlines are for applying, um, and then of course the month that their program area is expected to receive service. The brush chipping request page has also been updated. For the July program, we've divided Area 1 into three service groups. This, um, decision was in response to feedback that we received from, uh, from residents about brush piles sitting on their properties for weeks at a time while they're waiting to be chipped and the concern that this is a potential fire hazard. So to reduce that lag time, residents were asked to select their preferred service date range, which you can see, um, in the, the table at the bottom of the slide. So the last column on the right, actual chipping date range, if conditions permit, of course, always the caveat throughout the website, uh, that, you know, things do come up. Chipping won't take place if it's a red flag warning day or the weather is bad. Um, so, so these are tentative dates, but it's what we're aiming for. Um, so they're asked to select their preferred service date range and then they're given the deadlines for when their piles must be ready, which is approximately a week before each service date. Uh, people are also able to register for their service date up to two weeks prior to the date range. So we're hoping that this will give residents more time to arrange to have their piles ready, uh, by their preferred dates. And of course, all of these deadlines are relayed to the resident via a confirmation email, provided that they give us their email address. Uh, and the changes are also all reflected in the mail packages, which you guys actually all should have received probably last week. If you're in Area 1. So that's it on the brush chipping update. Uh, the next revision that I'll talk about is this Find Emergency Information tab. So we've added this tab here, uh, to the top right-hand side of the page, just under, uh, the main toolbar. The tab is going to serve as a quick link for visitors to find information such as COVID-19 testing and events, information about, uh, public shirt, public, sorry, PSPS. I can never remember the, the correct order of those, of the PS and the PS. Uh, the PG&E Community Wildfire Safety Program and weather-related information as needed. And of course, any other relevant emergency information should have come up. And the last, uh, update that we're expecting is an upgrade to the search engine that we use on our website. And I'm actually going to hand this over to Commissioner Sreen to provide the update.
Great, thank you. Um, this is kind of an internals, uh, discussion, so, uh, I'll try and be quick about it. It's mostly just a comment that, uh, the search engine that's part of our website is, as most things with WordPress, a plugin. Uh, it's one of the top used search plugins that goes with WordPress websites that, that's used around the world. Um, but it just kind of the new version, new version four, which is not backward compatible and thus requires some custom effort to move forward. Uh, because this plugin is, is so widely used, uh, after I guess quite a bit of, uh, upset, they announced that, well, that we will continue supporting the current version three, but we do want everyone to move to version four. So there's no time pressure to move forward, but ultimately we want to move forward to the newest version uh, because that's where all the bug fixes will be and particularly the security aspects will be. Uh, so the question is, how much effort will it be? I've looked through the, the migration guide myself on this issue, but I'm not a WordPress expert, so I can't have a, a fully definitive answer. Uh, so Justin's going to do that, Justin Korn, who is our WordPress developer and our, our site manager and site hoster. So, uh, this is really an, an explanation for you, the commission, that we'll do this in two phases. We're going to have him do an assessment, uh, to go through and see how much work it will be. Part of the reason why he needs to go do that is because he didn't originally do the site. Remember Dave, uh, was our, the person actually, uh, put the site into WordPress and then retired, uh, shortly thereafter. So Justin just needs to do the work to go uncover what Dave did and, and see how much work is needed to move forward. Uh, Justin does, it'll take him two to three hours, uh, in an afternoon to kind of go through and really fully understand how much work it will be. Uh, and he will be doing that shortly. Well, actually, I will say he will be doing that shortly, but, um, he, uh, as most people's kids are, they come at unexpected times and they, his wife just had a second kid at a slightly unexpected fashion. Uh, so he'll be away from the desk for the next couple of weeks. But when he returns, uh, we'll have him move to do this assessment and then tell us how much it will be to do the full upgrade. Ultimately, you won't notice any difference. Uh, you might notice the website search works faster, but you won't see anything different. Things shouldn't work any, any different. Um, but it will make the site, uh, easier to administer, uh, take less resources and be more secure as well. So that's that.
Hey, thank you very much. Uh, next slide is our report on the OK slide and resources. And Sarah, you and I were pretty involved in this. Do you want to give an overview of what occurred and where we are now with this slide?
Absolutely. Uh, so as we reported last month, uh, the previously named OK Help Cards have been through many iter- iterations, uh, the latest of which is to actually transform them into an OK card only. Uh, so after a pretty productive call, I think with representatives from the commission, staff, Los Altos Hills, uh, Los Altos Hills CERT and ECC, we determined that a more effective version of this card is to use it to communicate that you are OK. So we're kind of operating under the assumption here that if someone really needs help, they're going to seek it out. They're not going to wait for somebody to come to them. Um, additionally, we don't want to take on any liability should anyone rely on us to provide help when they display this card if we're unable to provide that assistance. And since we don't have programs in place where we're constantly surveying the district, we want to make sure that nobody's relying on this card if they do need help. Uh, so the backside of the card is going to be some really valuable, uh, information, um, on what to do in an emergency, for example, how to turn off your gas or how to use a fire extinguisher in addition to social media information. Um, and instead of printing and mailing the card, we thought it might be better to make the card available on our website for downloaded printing at home. That way the people who don't want it, don't have to throw it away and the people who do want it know where to go to get it. Uh, we also plan on printing copies to place at Town Hall and these will be laminated copies, um, or just, you know, really heavy card stock that's going to last a long time. Um, and those will be available at Town And those will be available at Town Hall or at district events once normal activity resumes. We will still send a letter to everybody, which will instruct residents on how to download and print the card or where to pick up a hard copy, how to use the card. And then of course, where to take pet first cert classes and any other, excuse me, emergency preparedness information that we want to share with them. We won't be providing any COVID-19 information in the letter. That was another decision by the group. We're just sort of really focusing on emergency preparedness with this, with this instrument. And that's all I have. I'll hand it back to General Manager Logan.
Hey, thank you very much. Any questions on any of that information? I'll just move on then. Okay.
Jay, I have a question. Have we looked at the cost of actually mailing the card out to everybody?
I don't think we received any specific cost to that and we haven't gotten any printing costs yet.
Because we, we have mailed the old cards out in the past. And so I was wondering, you know, is it possible to do it this time around like they did last time? So that might be something we may want to look at.
Okay. Would that be a preference over the download and having it available on, online?
I just think the stock, the card stock is better than any printed paper that most people will have.
Yeah.
So, and you talk about the, the use and the longevity of the, of the, of the document, so.
Okay. Why don't we come back to you with some, with some costs and then maybe set it up for a consensus from the commission?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Because I could see, I'm sorry to interrupt, I can see that we already say we'll, it'll be available at Town Hall. I love the way people are picking up pathway maps in front of Town Hall. If we just knew it was always there, then I think people would go get it and add a convenient time for them.
George, I was just going to say, this is Duffy speaking, that basically I heard the prices were before, were $8,000 to $10,000 for mailing out as we did before, but that was two laminated cards that went out in the mailing. So that's just, you know, gives you sort of a ballpark, but Jay could get a new, you know, quote on what that might cost would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think coming back in the July meeting with quotes that actually have the printing cost, the lamination cost and the meeting cost would be really helpful. And then we'll just discuss it in the commissioners and we'll gather input from the committee that's been so helpful to us. And we'll see where that goes. Does that sound like a fair way to proceed?
Sounds good to me.
That sounds good.
Thank you. The last slide, just real quickly, is the Santa Clara County Budget Timeline. And I just wanted to mention to all of you, I think I sent an email out, but just to confirm that the county executive's budget was released to the public on June 15th and the adopted budget of the commission was fully included in the county executive's budget recommendation for a, for approval by the Board of Supervisors on June 23rd, I believe it is. Yeah, June 23rd. However, that recommendation is only good for the month of July and August because then the county exec will come back in August with a full week of hearings and you'll see the dates there. And then the County Board of Supervisors will adopt the county budget on August 25th. So that's where we are with the budget, but so far proceeding well. We're right in the pipeline. All the information that Corey Vargas submitted was a part of the budget report from the county executive. So Corey, do you have any comment you want to make on this slide?
Um, no, I don't think any, any further comment, but yeah, it was nice to see that, that everything that we submitted was included in the draft budget, at least for the coming months, couple of months.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. President, that's the end of the report. Thank you very much. And I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, General Manager Logan, is there any discussion from the commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Commissioner, is there any public comment at this time? All right, seeing none. I just had one further item for the website, General Manager Logan and Sarah is that Greenway to do the collection for, that we pay for a couple of times a year and once a month at Foothill. I know for this month, they're moving the collection from Foothill College to Parisma Park. And so I know it's on the Greenway site. I saw that earlier this week, but it would probably be good just to put that on the, our website too, in case someone goes looking for where are they actually supposed to go for their drop-off.
Okay, we'll do, we'll check, we'll get that taken care of. Thank you for that information. That's fine.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. All right, now we will move on to item nine, Emergency Services Manager update. 9A Events and Activities, Emergency Services Manager Gluhann, please provide the update.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm going to take my video off in case my bandwidth goes bad on my internet here, so. I won't, you will not see my face. And we've already discussed several of these things. I, I think that's kind of an important point for everybody to know that we're integrating messaging as a real priority in Los Altos Hills. And that's shown in our group effort as a team getting up and out and relevant and timely. So some of these meetings are duplicates because they have multi-layered folds that we attend for. And you've already seen some of those presented in General Manager Logan's report. But some of the events and activities, I have regularly scheduled meetings. There's a couple, there's one that it's a little different. I go to the CERT CCLT meeting, which is a great place to meet with the other CERT representatives from around the county to find out what they're doing in their programs and to help begin to start a plan, depending on how long the health orders stay in place as to how CERT will look moving forward. One of the concepts that we've kind of talked about is for Los Altos Hills specifically, at this point is just re-engagement of CERTs because there isn't a possibility of an academy right now. There are some remote and possibly some in-person, hands-on skill days being proposed, but so far we haven't come up with that exact, exact example of what that would look like and how that would proceed. Also that I didn't put on here and General Manager Logan has mentioned already, we did attend the ECC, the Emergency Communication Committee meeting. That is the first Tuesday of the, of the month. So we, we're again trying to work on collaborations with our meetings and our messaging to get consistency. And then the EMA is the Santa Clara County Emergency Managers Association meeting. And again, a great place to get information on what different areas and cities are doing. Again, being that we're not specifically a jurisdictional location like the town of Los Altos Hills, we still have a lot of efforts in education and that's where a lot of this messaging is coming from. And on that note, the Public Information Officer meeting, the weekly meeting is a great place, again, getting that timely update, the, you know, the, the actual flash of what's going on this week. Some additional meetings, kind of one-off type meetings. I did the Welcome Committee meeting back on May 26th. That was interesting. The focus of that was around CERT, around, I pulled a lot of the wildland evacuation components that we're working on as a district, talking about shaded fuel breaks and evacuation workshops and the HIZ or the Home Ignition Zone inspections. And then talking a little bit about our collaborations with Fire Safe Council, again, trying to pull in some of the vegetation management components. We did talk about different levels of possibly involving community, maybe restarting the neighborhood network program and different, maybe multi-layers of volunteers. Marsha Hovey from the town and I are working on that to answer some of those questions that have come up around CERT with, you know, if we can't team up with someone that doesn't live with us, how are we going to go out in pairs? So we were talking about how can we maybe get included volunteers inside maybe a family unit. Strategic planning meeting, I'm not going to go over that much more. Jay and I finished the third of those three along with Sarah, those three meetings. We did start, I did a restart meeting with Fire Safe Council to talk about HIZs. They do have six personnel that can help on getting the backlog. They're down about 40 and about, about 40 resident requests and 35 of them are ours in Los Altos Hills. So marketing's gone very well. Whenever someone wants to remove a dead tree or a eucalyptus, I, I point them into usually an HIZ and the benefits of that. PSPS workshop, we actually did a more sophisticated county level workshop back in May with elected officials and, and county officials and different jurisdictional representation. That was again followed on June 3rd by a more local presentation for the Santa Clara County and the San Mateo County of PSPS. That same night, I was kind of busy. There was a webinar about infection prevention essentials by Coast Side CERT. Kind of wanted to see what our neighbors are doing around COVID and response during the pandemic. And then we have an ongoing, and this will be in another slide, Neighborhood Evacuation Planning that's ongoing that we started back in February. We had another meeting June 5th and we have another meeting coming up, which I'll talk in a later slide. Next slide. Why don't I stop right now? Were there any questions on that last slide? Because it's, it's mostly just meeting-centric, but if there were any questions about those meetings? Okay, so I'll give a little more detail on some upcoming events. This is the, we introduced this last month. The Saddle Mountain area is currently, the town is developing a letter to send out for interest. There's approximately 25 residents. We've been doing remote planning and we're planning on the 23rd to do kind of a, see how much resident interest is there in a Zoom meeting. So we're, that letter, that's going out in the letter, the invitation on June 3rd. I've also been in contact with Eugenia Rendler, who's with the Acting Director of the Fire Safe Council currently. She's been there, community outreach. She is willing to do a remote workshop, but we're also thinking about other possibilities, either a large backyard or maybe some other area that's large that we could accommodate residents with distant, social distancing and still be able to do more of a in-person workshop. So these are all collaborations with other agencies that will need to happen. County Fire, Sheriff's Department, the town obviously of Los Altos Hills. Lots of different agency collaboration with this. Little map of the area in case you're not familiar, we're Saddle Mountain. As I'm sure you are being all from Los Altos Hills. And then the last item is the, again, what do you do when you pivot in COVID to have a Fourth of July celebration? It's going to be a caravan. That is, as General Manager Logan mentioned, one of the allowable types of gathering is to utilize vehicles. So we have been asked to do basically the same capacity, just altered in how we do it and what it looks like as the certain ECC volunteers, mostly in a radio capacity at key points that are marked on the map. Basically, the residents are encouraged to walk or arrive at the park or the school to watch the cars, listen to music. And I believe the caravan will go twice around this route that's on this map. Obviously maintaining social distancing while having a good time and celebrating and having festivities is, is the goal of this event. Any questions before I move on to the next slide? And so I'm going to just, one more back. Yeah, so we're, we're continuing our work on meetings, remote meetings for seeing what's available. County Fire has been very helpful and Paul Morgan had a Zoom meeting with Sarah, Jay and I about opportunities to work with the Antara system at County Fire. Thank you to Chief Glass for initiating that. We also have met with some other companies. Let me let Sarah speak to what we've done, reaching out to the town. I also, Commissioner Spreen was very helpful in making that connection. So let me let her give a little bit more information on what we're doing on that end. Sarah?
Thank you, Emergency Services Manager Gluhann. So as she mentioned, staff has met with Paul Morgan from County Fire to review the Antara system that was presented to the commission earlier this year. County Fire has provided us with view-only access to the system, so we're able to review data and download as needed, which is really helpful as we sort of figure out what sort of data is out there that we have access to. And we look forward to continued collaboration with County Fire. We also had a meeting with Zach Dahl, the Planning Director for the town of Los Altos Hills, as he discussed their GIS, their ongoing GIS project. I know Commissioner Spreen is very familiar with the long slog that that process has gone through, but there, there, there's a light at the end of the tunnel here and they're just about done. And I know that the vendor who worked on that project for them did a lot of work to really validate the jurisdictional boundaries for the town. They went back to original plot maps and survey data to make sure that the, that the parcel information was accurate. As we know, some of the data from the county is not always exactly what it's supposed to be. So they have a very accurate map now and they have offered us access to that, which is great. We also met with the vendor who did work for Los Altos Hills. And he, you know, has provided a few suggestions for us on how we can really get this project started and get the ball rolling. And then finally, we are also aware that Fire Safe Council is planning its own GIS project and we hope to be able to work with them as well to help provide updated information as they start a project to map the county CWPP annexes. And of course, we'll be looking at that, that Annex 4 with our own district annual review. So that'll be another great opportunity for collaboration with another agency. We still plan to bring a final project scope to the commission, but we want to make sure that we're able to integrate with all the local agencies that interact with the district and kind of avoid reinventing the wheel, especially in cases where the data already exists and we just need to access it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Sarah. And again, just to point out how important those collaborations are. I know we've utilized Fire Safe Council for many projects. And as Sarah mentioned, they're bringing on an intern to work on GIS of the CWPP and the annexes of which Sarah mentioned were Annex 4. They want to lay those out and look at what jurisdictions that have adopted the annexes might have in common as far as needs for vegetation management on a more global scale rather than just maybe in that specific community. So they're trying to tie that in and kind of complete the CWPP as a living document and update it and continue that integration into our program. And like Sarah had mentioned, our strategic planning and whatnot as we move forward as a district. That's all I have for the Emergency Services Manager portion. If there's any questions from the commissioners or the public?
Very good. Any questions from the public? So you really covered the items 9A and 9B. And so any questions? And let's move on to item 9C, Revitalization of the ARC Emergency Hub. Emergency Services Manager Gluhann, please provide the update.
Absolutely. I'll just finish off on those last slides that I was just, just on and finishing. So the last section of my Report C component or of my manager Report C is the revitalization and what we're doing in CERT. As General Manager Logan mentioned already, we've been doing the CERT Zoom meetings for, since the middle of March. So it's, I think we're at 14 or 15 something weeks, 16 weeks, something like that. And around that, we obviously, you know, that's good. It gives a great sense of community. Our CERTs are able to see, we have a very good turnout. Marsha Hovey from the town frequently attends also, so she's great for the input and then just the input of all of our CERTs and the recommendations. And then we finally got, General Manager Logan started a conversation with the administration at Foothill College to again revisit access. As everyone knows, access has been an issue since construction. We got about a three-week window when we didn't have construction and then COVID virus stepped up and limited our, our ability to get on-site. So we reached out and they sent us, which is a pretty, what we found from the PIO meeting, a pretty common expectation of how to get onto college campuses and the expectations. It, a document was, that I developed out of that information I was given is basically a health screening and then how to get access to the campus. So we've provided that to the CERT members. We have scheduled some, we have a scheduling system in place and CERT volunteers in place to start scheduling training and projects. As soon as we get Victoria back up to speed 100% as far as contracts, if that happens later on, we already have some projects planned, including an inventory box of COVID materials in case we had an activation or an incident where we need of COVID materials in case we had an activation or an incident where we needed extra COVID masks, gloves, things like that, sanitizers, washing stations, things like that. So we're adding that into the CERT cache along with the perishable items that need replacing, bags and goods and and other items in there. Again, meetings, I guess we're at twelve, twelve meetings we've had. We get about twenty participants. Here's a little picture of the CERT Fog Manual that was given out at the CERT refreshers or as you graduate from CERT Academy. I'm utilizing that kind of to do a little bit of class training off of. In addition, we're pulling out the CERT ECC folders, and we're starting to integrate some of those jobs into our trainings. I apologize, I have a loud parrot in the background. Again, collaborating with the ECC to combine these drills. And Sarah, the next slide, please? And finally, since I have a noisy parrot, I will see if Sarah would like to finish up where we are on the vests at this point. Sarah?
No problem. So I've been working closely with CERT members, Dave Stewart and Neil Caton, Katon, sorry, I don't know how to pronounce it, to gather quotes for the purchase and customization of the CERT vests. We have run into some logistical issues with the embroidering of the Fire District logo on the vest as the spacing on the front is very limiting, but we have been in discussion about including both the town and the district logo as screen printed logos on the back of the vests and excluding any customization on the front. We are continuing to research pricing, logo application and safety features from a variety of resources, but we have already gotten sizing from all of the volunteers, which is great, and we've been able to sort of size or, I guess, estimate up so that we can get, you know, a nice round number, a hundred vests. We'll have extra as we have new volunteers come on board. They'll have access to those vests, and we've scaled that estimate up. That's all I have on the vest, and I'm happy to answer any questions or turn it back over to Emergency Services Manager Gluhan.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anything, any question?
Let's go, I'll run this through the through the process. Thank you, Emergency Services Manager Gluhan. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Price? Duffy? Any question?
No questions, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Spring?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll now move on to item ten, Community Emergency Response Team Activities and Update. Item ten A, Los Altos Hills CERT, Emergency Services Coordinator Gluhan, please provide the update. Captain Gluhan?
Yes.
Didn't she just do that?
That was just the C item for the CERT update for the ARC rehab and and the CERT combined.
Okay. So you, yeah, you've already provided ten A and ten B. All right. General Manager Logan, we may want to look at on our agenda, how do we optimize the flow there between between those two topics? Okay. Thank you, Emergency Services Manager Gluhan. Item ten B for the Los Altos Hills CERT, you've provided that. Are there, is there any discussion from the Commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Price?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
Oh, not on that, but can I go back to ten A?
Sure, absolutely.
This says Los Altos Hills CERT. Shouldn't we be saying Los Altos Hills County Fire District CERT? Or is CERT just Los Altos Hills?
Interesting question.
Yeah, that's been one of those differentiations that we've talked about. I think in the, when we we say Los Altos Hills CERT, not just the town, it's also the unincorporated, that's kind of understood, but I think either term is appropriate for our CERT program. We, yeah, it's it's hard to say because the town, and that's something that that I think further direction from the Commission might be what they would ultimately like it to land as, kind of an abbreviated, that was Los Altos Hills CERT that we've been using for abbreviated name for CERT program.
Mark, I know it's not my turn, but can I make a comment? This is Neil.
Absolutely, Neil.
Um, so I just wanted to say where it came from. So that's actually, the Los Altos Hills is the town logo, and that name there is part of their logo. And so originally, the plan was to have both logos there with branding for each. And so therefore, it would be clear it's both organizations.
Okay.
We also tried to get more of a generic emergency services worker to try to bring the the emergency component in, you know, not as much the CERT, even though the CERT logoing is on the front for the district, more of a patch, and then a more generic service worker for the the title of.
Denise, we lost you.
May I just say something? Duffy?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. My, my, I've always said this, but I think it has to do, and Jay would have to clarify this, with respect to the liability that's incurred and when you're going to be able to pick up the bill for anybody that gets injured, whether they can be covered by the town calling them out or whether the Fire District were not in a position to do that. However, setting all that stuff aside, my feeling is that we're paying the bill on these, right? If that's the way it is, then we should have more prominent notification that this is a Los Altos Hills County Fire District CERT program, and that label shouldn't be just a little tiny scrunchie on the front, it should be somehow equal at least with what's on the back. So that's my two cents, okay? I just think that we need to have equal representation. Thank you.
I can make a couple of comments. The back of the vest that we, I think, have decided on does not have the prominence of the town logo on it. It has emergency services volunteer, and then at the bottom is the logo. We're trying to figure out how to get the district logo on. This will be a joint effort between the town and the district as far as payment of the vest, so the town will be contributing funds to pay, to help pay for the vest. And then also, the town is the activator of certs, not the district. So maybe that speaks to some of your questions.
Thanks, Jay, for clarifying that. That's good. I'm glad to hear they're going to pay for something.
Yes, we're working out those details. And we'll come back with you with, we're we're still in the design phase, still getting information on logos and working through some of those complications, so. More to come.
Very good.
Thank you.
Janice, anything else? Thank you. All right, Commissioner Kearney? Carrie?
You caught me.
Any comment?
None.
All right. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll now move on.
Sorry, I wasn't on the mute button fast enough. Mark, can I get in?
Neil, yes, please.
I just wanted to say, I understand how logos are emotional and design, people have many, many opinions. I would just urge that it's really easy to blow up whatever proposals there are, and this has been on the table for like four to six months, and I would just, speaking as a CERT, I would just like to get it actually done so that we have Night Safe vests, which currently we don't have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Any other public comment? All right. Hearing none, none others? We'll now move on to item eleven, Adoption of Resolution Twenty dash nineteen. Resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District, authorizing execution of professional services agreement between the Los Altos Hills County Fire District and Friar and Loretta Incorporated for On-Call Engineering Consultant Services. Item eleven A is the resolution. General Manager Logan, please provide any relevant background for the resolution?
Now, thank you, Mr. President. I'm very pleased to put this resolution in front of the Commission and give you some background on it. This is, for a quick review, we've talked about hydrant repairs now for a while, and the consensus of the Commission was to move forward with a retention of an on-call consulting engineer. The district will have the resources necessary then to swiftly access and repair damaged hydrants and damages to surrounding environments. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Jeff Tarantino, and Mr. Tarantino is with us. He will introduce you to his firm, Friar and Loretta, and provide a brief report on the on-call engineering consulting services for the district. This introduction will support the recommendation to approve the resolution for a professional services agreement with Friar and Loretta for on-call engineering services. So Jeff, thank you for being with us tonight, and I'll turn it over to you. It's all yours. Thank you for these slides.
Yeah, thank you, General Manager Logan and Commissioners. Thank you for inviting me to participate in the meeting. Just want to spend a few minutes telling you a little bit about our firm, Friar and Loretta, and our experience, and then we'll talk a little bit about the scope of work. So who are we? We're a local civil engineering firm founded in nineteen ninety-seven. Rich Loretta currently serves as our president, David Friar is still actively involved. We began our our work in San Mateo and have slowly expanded over the last two decades, with now offices in San Francisco and in Oakland. Next slide, please. So one of the things that is, you know, fundamental about what we do is importance of the customer. You know, we can only serve, we only get to do our job if we're responsive and provide good quality work to satisfaction of our clients. And that's something that that General Manager Logan and I spoke about in length when she first reached out to me about providing services to the to the district. So, you know, we've structured our scope and and intend to deliver on on those promises. Next slide. So just a small listing of our clients that we work for, and the two clients at the top there in bold, I wanted to highlight those. Those are our, were our first two clients and continue to be clients of Friar and Loretta today. We have also worked with your neighbors, City of Los Altos, and then also for the Town of Los Altos Hills, so we're very familiar with the area. Next slide, please. Just a couple of example projects, sanitary sewer. Just want to show our breadth of work. Next slide. Storm drain work, again, kind of the breadth of the variety of construction and engineering that that will support our experience to support the district in in fire hydrant design and repair. Next slide, please. And also our water experience, just, I like to highlight because it's fun, the the one on the right there, we did all the infrastructure to support the Chase Center. It's not being used very often these days, but but it was an exciting project that we were, we were happy to be involved with. Next slide, please. And not only do we provide engineering services, but we do provide a wide range of project management and program management services. So staff augmentation, augmentation, construction management and inspection experience, and this is something that we're going to leverage as part of the services that we will provide to the district. Next slide, please. So just again, highlighting, we're a local firm, we, we're thirty engineers, we're in three offices, we'll be serving you out of our San Mateo office, and we have staff local to to the area, and we'll leverage our experience with the planning, design and construction utilities to to support the district. So the next slide is just a little wrap-up slide here. And so to talk a little bit more about what we're going to do for the district, we understand, I understand from speaking with General Manager Logan, that, you know, from time to time, there can be damage to fire hydrants that that require immediate response. There are times where you need to coordinate with the local water districts, Prisma Hills Water Districts or Cal Water in order to coordinate with their capital improvement programs. And one of the things that we'll be able to provide to to the district is full support on project management, design, and as needed, construction management services. One of the things we understand that when when our services are needed, it's really our responsibility to be on site, observe the conditions, assess damage, if any, to the to the district facilities, develop a potential plan of action, and and communicate with the General Manager about what what action should be taken with the next steps, including if we feel there's a need for any additional, especially sub consultants such as a geotechnical engineer or or other support, that's something that we'll be able to quickly engage and mobilize to support any project, and then work through development of design, securing permits, and and assisting the district in securing construction contractors, including managing the construction project. So, you know, one of the things that that we're really happy with about what we do is that we understand kind of the full gamut of of a project. We know as a designer, we can't just kind of draw something on a piece of paper and hand it over to a contractor. We need to be available to to support the contractor, support the district, and ensure that we're delivering a project that meets the owner's needs is 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 something that can meet the long-term operational needs and and be responsive when we're requested. So the team that's going to be supporting me, Rich Loretta, again, our president of our firm, he'll provide all QAQC, so we always have this, basically what I call a second set of eyes reviewing all all documents and technical deliverables. I'll be supported by Camille Bandy, one of our senior engineers, who will be helping with all design. And one of the key personnel that's going to be supporting us, Jason Feudel. He's an associate engineer with with Friar and Loretta, but I call him our kind of Swiss Army, Swiss Army knife of an engineer. He provides all our construction management inspection and design. His background's really interesting. His dad worked for Cal Water for his entire career, and starting in high school, he started working on the on the crews, and so he understood, understands how to how to assemble water systems, he understands the importance of fire hydrants, and and he has spent his seventeen years with FNL, supporting our design and construction management services. So, you know, we feel that we bring the right set of skills, the right set of experience, and a right approach to support a district like yours in in addressing any, yeah, fire fire hydrant damage and repairs that are needed. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or talk a little bit more about any other topics the Commission, Commissioners would like to learn about.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Let me just kind of summarize that with the recommendation in front of you is to approve the resolution, and that would approve then the agreement for professional services with Loretta, Friar and Loretta. But three projects we have right now that need to take place is, number one, we need a consulting engineer to put a work plan together for the soil erosion that occurred on Horseshoe Lane. That's pretty severe, and we need to get the engineer out there to assess that so we can put it into part of our damage claim for the person who who caught, who hit the the hydrant and caused the damages. Second is, there's been a retaining wall suggested at Zapatini Court. We need to have a review by an engineer on that. And third, Prisma Hills Water District has requested the district to review three of their design standards having to do with fire hydrants. So without the services of a on-call consulting engineer, we don't have a way of addressing any of those three issues. So with that and with your introduction with Jeff and and the slides that you have, let me just conclude, recommend that the Commission adopt the resolution that will approve the and Loretta. So thank you, Mr. President, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the Commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions. The background information in your presentation are very clear. Thank you.
Commissioner Price?
No, no questions, but I want to say that this is an excellent presentation, and the resolution completely outlines everything that we need to approve tonight, so it's great. Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
All right. Thank you. Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion. Will the Commissioner make you the motion, and the Commissioner seconding said motion, please state your names for the benefit of the recording. Looking for a motion to adopt twenty dash nineteen.
Duffy, I recommend you approve Resolution Number Twenty dash nineteen.
Vaughn seconds the motion.
Thank you. All right. The night item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the Commission? Vice President Vaughn? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
None.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Are there any public comments on this item? Hearing none, thank you. If there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Very good, thank you. So, thank you, Jeff. We look forward to working with your firm, and it's great to have such a professional organization now as, you know, an extended part of our staff. Thank you.
You're welcome, and thank you for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. And Jay, I'll be in touch with you tomorrow to talk about next steps?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much. Jeff Tarantino signing off for the night. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to Item 12, Hazardous Fuel Reduction Update. Item 12A, Brush Chipping and Debris Removal Program Pilot Project Preliminary Analysis Areas Four and Five. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask Sarah to go through these slides that she's prepared, and we've worked together to put together a preliminary analysis, although we still don't have a lot of data because we just started the program for Area Four in April. So the April data is in, and Sarah, let me hand it over to you. Great pictures on the cover of your deck. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager Logan. Commissioners, as you can see here, the range in piles of brush, very widely, from very small to very large. So we definitely have diversity of brush pile size. So I'll begin just by giving you a quick update of the chipping program process. As you know, residents are able to sign up for chipping and disposal services via the website or by mailing in a registration card from the packet they receive in the mail. In April, Area Four was divided into three groups based on residents' preferred chipping week. The residents were contacted by Emily, who's our Fire Safe Council representative, working on this project for us, prior to her visiting the site. So she reached out to each resident before she visited the site. Emily visited the properties in each group to inspect, measure, and tag the piles. She then put together an RFP package for the group, which was sent to at least three contractors. Fire Safe Council then selected a qualified bidder and awarded them the contract for the specific group. Emily contacted residents in the group prior to contractors being on-site to service the properties, and then the piles were chipped. Finally, Emily contacted residents to let them know that chipping was complete. So these are the results of the first month of chipping. As General Manager Logan mentioned, we only have one week of, or excuse me, one month of this program completed so far. They did just wrap up May. We just got the invoices, but we haven't had a chance to analyze them, so they're not included in this presentation. But you can see here that the first week was very busy. Fire Safe Council contractors serviced 21 residents as opposed to just nine in the two subsequent weeks. There's also a noticeable range in bidding from $1,020 up to $19,000, so pretty significant differences there. And you can see down here at the bottom, brush piles ranged from .1 cubic yards to 128 cubic yards. So different properties are definitely taking advantage of this more than others, or perhaps, you know, properties with smaller piles, maybe they're, you know, on the ball and have been chipping all along and are just sort of taking advantage of this one last hurrah to get their properties fire safe. Here is a summary of the costs for the month of April. There were pretty high administrative costs during April, but we attribute that to the start of the program and the shelter in place, as there are a lot of restrictions that both Fire Safe Council and the contractors had to adhere to. The total cost of the April brush chipping was $15,028.58 with an average cost of $12.88 per cubic yard of brush. The first month of the pilot provided the district and Fire Safe Council with a lot of information and opportunities to improve the program. As we mentioned in the General Manager update, the July brush chipping will be broken up into three service date ranges with specific deadlines for registration and piles to be ready, and there is this tentative 2020 schedule on the website so residents can plan accordingly. The confirmation emails will provide additional communication to residents so that there are fewer cancellations or people reporting that they didn't know when to have their piles ready. We've also asked Fire Safe Council to collect data on the volume of chips at each site to help us more accurately compare the costs to the SP McLanahan invoices that we have from previous years. When we were billed by SP McLanahan, they don't track the pile, the size of the brush piles prior to chipping, and they only report on the cubic yards of chips that are hauled. So it makes it really difficult to compare the costs that they charged us versus what we're paying now for Fire Safe Council. So we're trying to really make sure that we're comparing apples to apples and giving everybody a fair chance to be included as part of our program. So overall, the residents seemed happy with the pilot program. There were a few complaints about the process change or questions about why the district has switched vendors, which Emily was happy to field and try to explain to them, you know, that we're trying to make sure that we're spending taxpayer money wisely, that our residents are getting those services that they need very efficiently. So we hope that once we have a few more months of data, the cost of the program will justify why the process was changed and that we're better able to service the district residents. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Special Project Coordinator Hendricks. All right, General Manager Logan, Item 12B, Home Ignition Zone Program, Emergency Service Manager Gluhan, please provide the update.
Oh, thank you. And Emergency Services Manager Gluhan, I think I will just turn this over to you for a quick update.
Perfect, and I did do a little bit of the update in my regular report. The, it's been about two weeks, little over two weeks, that they've been allowed to restart the home ignition zone inspections. We have approximately 35 residents on the waiting list. We've had approximately six completed over the last week that I've received back information on. They are, they do have six employees that are available to do that. They are trying to fit it in between shaded fuel break, which was an important project for us that went on in this last two weeks also, and also the brush chipping program that's been pretty robust with everybody getting ready for fire season. So really good feedback. Again, I'm offering the HIZ when people, Corey will typically get responses about the dead tree program. She'll ask if I can talk to them about HIZs and the importance of them and the educational component, and it's been very receptive, and I've had a lot of really good feedback on how that is beneficial to the homeowner or the resident. And also, they've been able to offer information on other vendors. If they do need a tree removed or something, they've been able to offer, the Fire Safe Council's been able to offer several vendors that they've used for our bidding that are qualified to be able to do that for the resident to utilize. That's the end of that report, unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Emergency Services Manager Gluhan. All right, we'll move on to Item 12C, Shaded Fuel Break, Hazardous Fuel Reduction, Page Mill Road Phase One and Two. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Displayed before you are the report and the photos, and actually, these just came in this afternoon, that depict the construction of the shaded fuel break Phase One on Page Mill Road. And I hope to return to you at the next Commission meeting with a plan for Phase Two, which is the other section of Page Mill Road. So these details are being coordinated now with Fire Safe Council, and I just think that the pictures really are worth a thousand words because it really shows the before and after. And when I was up visiting the sites, watching the construction going on, you could really see the amount of brush that was being taken out. The other impact on me was just the amount of brush that was left that has to be looked at and surveyed, and we've got a lot of work to do. But you've got to start somewhere. So here you have it, and that's the end of the report on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the Commissioners? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions, but just going back to the chipping program, I think we're going to, by the time we're done, we're going to find that we've got a big cost savings here. It's so much more efficient with this process. The fact is that Emily goes out and checks the pile and measures it so that we don't have the big old truck and the chipper driving around to places that have canceled or aren't ready. So we're already got something. When they came to my house, they were planning on chipping 31 properties that day. I don't think they actually got to that, but it's just huge amount of work they're able to accomplish with this kind of format.
Thank you, George. Commissioner Price?
No questions. Looks good.
Commissioner Spreen?
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yeah, one comment or question about chipping. And I, we also had a very good experience with both Fire Safe, with Emily, and with McLanahan, who did the chipping. I have a question about the administrative costs on page four. So $9,000 of the $15,000, their administrative costs, is that right? Is that the right way to read that?
Yes, and in fact, I was going to comment on that. I think a lot of that reflects startup costs and just pulling everything together. But the costs are definitely formulated.
I'm getting this one.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. The administrative costs are formulated, and so there's no ambiguity, but they were compiling at one time. I think you'll start to see those even out because I'm keeping my eye on that.
Okay, when you say even out, do you have an expectation for what those are going to be on an ongoing basis?
It's, I'd have to go back to my notes, but I believe it's a 12% of the cost of the chipping contract, and then I believe it's about a 20% markup on the hour costs. But those are in the agreements. They're all specified in the agreements.
So these admin costs are just from the chippers or from Fire Safe?
Both, from, all from Fire Safe.
Oh, Fire Safe passes through the chipping companies. So if we can't compare chipping costs because they just calculated it in a different way with prior years with McLanahan, can we compare admin costs from previous years?
We didn't have any admin costs. They were all included in the hourly rate. So here, we break out the hourly rate with a percentage of the hourly rate for staff for an admin cost. That would be their liability, their workers' comp, their employment activities, and then, yeah.
And those aren't included now in those same costs?
They aren't.
From the chipping company? I mean, so their chipping costs don't cover their overhead? But I'm a little confused then.
Okay. The chipping, the chipping overhead is for Fire Safe Council's liability for the chipping overhead and the bidding. But let's take it offline because I've gone through it really thoroughly, and I just, you know, and then I can come back and give a report to the full Commission.
Great. It just seems like a huge number to me, but that's my question.
Right, right. I'm watching it.
Thanks.
Yeah, for sure.
Other than that, no questions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Terry. I just want to say, you know, I love the report from Fire Safe Council on the shaded fuel break. I'm excited that it's Phase One and Two. Looking forward to the additional phases. And Jay, let's have a conversation about, at what point do we want to pass on this report to someone like the town crier, because, you know, for them to see the kind of work that the Commission is getting done, you know, tangible efforts, tangible results. And so let's have a conversation about that. Any comments from the public?
Yes, this is Alan Epstein. I have a couple of questions about the chipping program.
Sure, Alan, please.
I'd like to know who the vendor was that won each of the opportunities. I also have some concerns about the administrative costs. I kind of recollect there was a 25% service charge. Now, maybe that was for the shaded fire break, or, but that was kind of the markup that I recollect. The administrative costs do seem quite high. In comparison to McLanahan, do you know how many, does the number of projects for this time period correspond with what McLanahan would do on a monthly basis, or is this number substantially higher or lower? Thank you.
So there are three questions there. The winners of the bid, the administration costs, and a comparison of month by month, a month-to-month utilization.
Right, I mean, I can speak to some of that. The awardee of the bid, Corey, how is that handled? Can you speak to that? Does that come through on the invoice, on our disbursements or not?
It does come on the invoice, yes. I believe the second two were McLanahan. I don't recall off the top of my head who the first winner was. I can look real quick.
Yeah, we can certainly disclose that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that can be disclosed, but, but, yes, I, as I recall, and I don't know if Sarah, you happen to remember off the top of your head, but the latter two were McLanahan, and the first one, I can't find the invoice.
Concerned about the administrative costs, as I recall, I believe it's 25%, and it's in the agreement, we just have to go back and pull the agreement, for Fire Safe Council staff costs. And then for the contract bidding, the award of the bid, I believe it's 12%. And that, those are the two uplift costs for administrative costs. But I will confirm that back when we, when we, we're going to go through a lot more analytics on this.
But there's only $6,000 of actual costs, and even if it's 30 or 40%, that would mean the administrative cost would only be something around $2,000, not $9,000.
Well, we were having costs in March, which was the startup. So staff, Fire Safe Council staff was working in March to get the program ready for the April launch. But we can disclose all those costs. It's just a matter of having, getting that to you. And then the monthly numbers, we only have one month, so I don't know what to say on that.
I was just, in comparison to what McLanahan would do on an average monthly basis.
Sarah, do you have that number? Because we were looking at those.
I do have that number, but it will take me a while to open up the file because my computer doesn't like all of these programs running at the same time, so I can get that to you by the end of the meeting. Definitely.
You know, I would suggest, General Manager Logan, that we just say, let's hold, well, let's get three months' worth of data, and then could do a comparison and collect all of those things, because we've got startup costs, we've got highly variable bidding, and so when the range is from 1,000 to 19,000 for the same work, yeah, your administration costs will look high if you choose the 1,000, but that's who they chose. And so let's get three months' worth of data, and then we've got a comparison we can really work from.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alan. All right, hearing nothing else? All right, we'll now move on to Item 13, Personnel Update. Item 13A, General Manager Spending Authorization. Commissioner Spreen, please present the item.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'll take care of the, I'll take A, B, and C on Item 13 if I can.
Thank you, Roger.
And this will explain some of the resolutions upcoming. The first aspect is to bring to a close a topic we've had for a couple of different sessions now, and that is the authorization. If I remind, just remind everyone, and any public may be listening, really, this is about the inefficiency and... is about the inefficiency and the obstacle it is that there is a lack of any spending authority for our general manager, whose responsibility is to keep this organization operating on a day-to-day basis. And she does that in a context of having no physical office, several part-time staff members, only part-time commissioners like us. And it's particularly an issue when we think about things like with their COVID emergencies, where we may not be meeting as often, and she has to go from meeting until the next meeting to get anything authorized. And if a real emergency were to happen, we'd be an issue where she couldn't even restock things without getting us together in a meeting. So all this is a fairly standard thing for a general manager to have. When we discussed it last time, we looked at most city managers and general managers have an authorization either on a per-item basis or on a per-month total basis. And in the spirit of being extra conservative, we thought we'd do belt and suspenders and do both. So the proposal before you has a maximum limit of $15,000 for any particular item and also $15,000 total for spending on a month-to-month dispersments so that we will be able to see the dispersments with a certain cap on it. By the way, that $15,000 compares to Los Altos Hills, where the city manager, who has the equivalent budget of an organization, has a $25,000 per-item limit and sort of a no-total limit. So this is a very conservative limits we'd be putting in place, but would be a market improvement in terms of allowing Jay and her staff some authorization to be able to do spending. So that's in front of you now, and that will be coming up as a resolution. I hope this explains the background for that. I don't know if you want to take comment now, or I should just go through all three things, and we can have comments during the resolution.
Why don't we get, take comments now so we can get any questions done? Any questions from the commission on item 13A? All right, then, Roger, let's go to 13B, which is the Emergency Services Manager Amendment, Amendment Two Employment Agreement.
It's a mouthful, and I'll take these two together because they kind of go together. You know, and this is why it's part of the Personnel Subcommittee is, you know, we are dedicated to making sure all our personnel paperwork is very well specified and matches what we're actually doing with people so that as we've increased our staff, we're actually doing it in a professional and highly specified way. So we've had some changes in sort of the number of hours we've been using for various people due to the COVID incident. First thing that happened was, I'm going to mix these two issues together a bit because they do interrelate. Victoria, who had come on to help us in administrative ways, as you know, she also works with AMR, the emergency ambulance system. And during COVID, she needed to remove herself from us to go help out them because they needed help getting PPE equipment for all the ambulance systems during the COVID lockdown. So, so she, by removing her from our, having time from us, that required Denise to pick up those services. And so she's actually been doing more hours, taking what, sort of taking the place of what Victoria had been doing. In addition, you'll notice there was a, quite an uptick in the CERT activity during COVID because part of, you know, this being an unprecedented time was making sure our emergency services really were at a alert level, were kept together at, with a lot of communication, and Denise was taking up all of that time. So the reason I say those two interrelate, what you have before you now is Victoria is now being able to come back to us. So the, one of the pieces of, one of the resolutions here is to have the same agreement we've had with her before, but a different time scope that will go from June 17th, which is tomorrow, through the end of the year. Because the previous contract with her would have, is ended. So this is basically an extension of the existing agreement we had with Victoria now that she can return to us now that the ambulance systems are in a fine state. The other one, it relates to Denise, is that because of the extra hours she's been picking up, we've been pushing the cap of hours that is specified tightly in her agreement. She's still on a halftime basis, but there's a little ambiguity about what halftime is. And currently, it's listed as, I think, 900 and something hours. This adds eight hours per month to that to allow us to eke out a few extra hours of her time per month and to reflect the extra time she's been putting in. So that's what that reflects on her, is changing the halftime definition from, I think, I don't have it in front of me here, 900 and something to 1,000 something. It's eight hours per, per, per month addition. So it's a very small change. That's, in case you're wondering what that's about. Both of those related to the fact that we've been having to shift hours around, and we really want to keep our agreements in line with what's actually being asked of our personnel. So this lets us keep all our paperwork accurate so that we, everything is on the up and up and transparent and publicized so everyone knows what we're using our people for. Those are the, those are the three items.
Great. Thank you, Roger, for the background. All right. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson? George?
Oh, I said no questions, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen? You just gave us the briefing?
No more comments.
Commissioner Carr?
No question.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none? All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to move on to item 14, which is Adoption of Resolution 2020, which is Resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing General Manager Joe and Logan to execute certain limited, certain limited agreements for goods and services for the benefit of the district and for, for hence of the district's purpose. All right, so we're going to do the, all four of these, we're going to, we'll go through the different agenda items, and we'll, I'll ask for motions to approve them, and we'll go through the whole voting process. So we're on 14A. Memorandum Report, District Legal, District Legal Counsel Segal, please present the report. You're on 14A, which is the spending authorization.
Thank you, President Warren. I think that Commissioner Spreen went through most of this information, a couple of items to highlight. This authorization is in addition to some other authorizations that currently exist, the credit card spending and the president's authority. This is in addition to that. It's not commingled with that. Per the commission's request, this authorization is specific to the General Manager Logan. It's not a blanket authorization. Happy to answer any questions about it, but as I said, I think Commissioner Spreen covered the limits. It's reported each month, and there's a full process of legal review and compliance with laws and those other safeguards that we try to have in place already.
Very good. Thank you, District Legal Counsel Segal. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No question.
Commissioner Spreen?
No question.
Commissioner Carr? Janice, I didn't hear. Janice, you're on mute?
Sorry.
Any question?
You're good. You can talk.
No question.
No question.
All right. Thank you, Janice. Commissioner Kearney?
None.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the resolution. Item 14B, Resolution 2020, Resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing General Manager Joe and Logan to execute certain limited agreements for service, for goods and services for the benefit of the district and for hence of the district's purpose. I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion? And the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording.
Commissioner Spreen moves the resolution.
Commissioner Tyson seconds.
Thank you. The item is open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
No, no, we're just, we're still discussing where.
Oh, no question, sorry.
Yeah. Not a vote yet. Jump of the gun. Commissioner Tyson?
No.
All right, Commissioner Price?
No.
Commissioner Spreen?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comments on this item? Hearing none? Then there's no further discussion. We'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? Yes. Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Good. Thank you. We'll now move on to item 15, Adoption of Resolution 20-21, Resolution of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing execution of First Amendment to Los Altos Hills County Fire District Emergency Services Manager Employment Agreement with Denise Gluhan. All right, I'm on eight, page eight. All right, 15A is the resolution. General Manager Logan, please provide any relevant background for the resolution.
Thank you, President Vaughn. I believe, or President Warren, I'm so sorry. I believe that the, the details was given very well by Commissioner Spreen, so I really don't have anything else to add other than to recommend approval of this amendment to the employment agreement to increase the hours and the hour increase 960 to 1056, which is still part-time work.
Great. Thank you, General Manager Logan. All right, and so remember, we go through the questions twice. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
None.
Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording?
Vaughn makes a motion to move.
Price seconds.
Thank you very much. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
No, we're not voting yet. Just the, we're still in discussion.
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
None.
Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Hearing none? There's no further discussion. We'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes, I mean, yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes, means yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to item 16, Adoption of Resolution 20-22 of the Los Altos Hills County Fire District authorizing execution of independent contractor agreement for consulting and technical services with Victoria Beebe. Item 16A is the resolution. General Manager Logan, please provide any relevant background for the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend adoption of Resolution 2022 that will approve the independent contractor agreement with Victoria Beebe, and just very pleased to have her back available to the district. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
Question.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Hearing none, I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording?
Kearney moves.
Vaughn second.
Very good. The item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No question, but why are we asking if there's questions twice each time?
Let me get back to the general manager and the council on this. I think we might be able to streamline this for July.
Yes, please.
Okay, please do.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearney?
I share Commissioners Tyson's question, but otherwise I don't have it.
Understood. Understood. Are there any public comments on the item? All right, hearing none? And there's no further discussion. We'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
President Vaughn, I'm sorry, Vice President Vaughn. This is, said President Vaughn twice. This is maybe telling him.
He could get for a promotion. He's got it for a promotion.
I'm going to pass on that, but yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
I think it's a palace coup. Anyway, yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? Yes. Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to item 17, the 2020, me to 2025 Strategic Plan Update. General Manager Logan, please provide the update.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. There were discussions convened over the month with CPSE for the strategic plan. We had it tentatively scheduled for September 21st through 24th. In the discussions, we just did a lot of brainstorming. CPSE still maintains that they need to deliver the services on-site in meetings. They're not set up yet for Zoom, but we talked about how to deal with that and some of the kind of things we could do. So one of them was to shorten the time spent, do as much of the survey work online without being in the same room together, and then if necessary, be outside if the weather permits or really keep the groups very small. So CPSE agreed to come back to us with another proposal and see if, then I will present that to the commission. I hope to have it for your July meeting. And I think Sarah was on the phone with me. I think we're feeling pretty, pretty uplifted that that could be a doable kind of strategic planning session. And Sarah, do you want to make some comments on this also? Anything that you want to comment on?
I think you covered most of it. I think the one thing that we also discussed was revising the feedback tool that we provide to our external stakeholders. I know that some of you commissioners who were around for the last strategic planning session had thought that it was really valuable to have the external stakeholder meeting in person because of the feedback tool being kind of complicated and needing sort of that one-on-one interaction with a meeting facilitator. So we did discuss revising that, making it more friendly to being an online tool and also to providing us with more useful feedback than just ranking things by priority. But other than that, CPSE looks, seems like they're eager to work with us, and I think it'll be a valuable process.
Very good.
Those are the end of our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Thank you, General Manager Logan. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No discussion.
Commissioner Tyson?
No discussion.
Commissioner Price?
None.
Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr? Janice, any feedback? You're on mute?
How did that happen?
All right, we can hear you now.
I was just too far back, I didn't change anything. The answer was no.
Thank you. Commissioner Kearney? All right, is there any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll now move on to item eighteen, financial consultant update. Item eighteen A, district credit card, financial consultant Vargas, please provide the update.
Thank you, President Warren. I am very pleased to announce that we have received our district credit cards and they have been dispersed to General Manager Logan and emergency services manager Gluhann. And my understanding is that General Manager Logan has already made her first purchase that of a, of a vest, so I'm just, I'm just very pleased that it was a long time coming, probably about seven, eight months to get, and we finally have it and.
Great.
Now we're able to make sort of those little emergency purchases that, without having to go through.
Operational.
Yeah. Yep, so that's really my report on that, no other update.
Thank you very much, thank you, financial consultant Vargas. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions.
Commissioner Price?
No questions.
Thank you, Duffy. Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, now we'll move on to item nineteen, adoption of resolution twenty dash twenty-three, resolution of the Los Angeles Hills County Fire District amending resolution fifteen dash six and seventeen dash eight and committing funds for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Item nineteen A memorandum report, fiscal consultant Vargas, please provide the report.
Thank you, President Warren. So commissioners, you have your, the memorandum report, I hope you've looked over, gives kind of a background. Committed funds are basically the, the general fund, right now we currently have set up, there are two committed fund accounts, two million dollars for emergency operations and two million dollars for just the regular daily operations. And the rest of our fund balance is just a, an undesignedated fund balance. So at the end of this year, because we haven't been, we have less spending on the tree program, haven't had any spend, spending of the budget on the hydrant infrastructure account, we're probably going to have close to twenty million just sitting in that, that undesignedated fund. And it just seemed like a, a smart move to show that we do have plans for funds, might not be happening in the current budget, current fiscal year, but this is sort of, it, it makes it transparent that we're not just idly sitting on a lot of funds with, with no plans. And so this resolution, which it amends the prior commitment of those, those two accounts that I previously mentioned, this is looking to add a commitment for buildings and improvements of six million dollars, and that's for our fire station, which is nearing, you know, more than twenty years old. A commitment of one million dollars for wildfire protection and technology, and then a commitment of three million dollars for hydrant and infrastructure improvements, those being the assets of the fire hydrants that we own. And so commissioners, per the governmental accounting standards board, GASP number fifty-four, you, the highest level of decision-making authority, have to give a resolution that is committing these funds, and then the resolution before you, it has been reviewed and approved by our auditors, Ida Bailey, that it does conform to GASP fifty-four. And I think just, you know, the recommendation is that we should commit those funds. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, fiscal consultant Vargas. Are there any clarifying questions from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No questions.
Commissioner Tyson?
No questions, makes sense.
Commissioner Price?
No questions, good job.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
One question. The wildfire technology, protection and technology, is that, does that include cameras for detecting fires, say, you know, in the forest area?
Yes, that would include, I believe.
Well, hey, I think, Corey, I think, if we were to do that program, this is just a budgetary activity that we, we're, we're designating those funds at this time, Janice, that we don't actually have a proposal in front of us we're spending that money on yet.
Okay. Thank you, President Warren.
Okay. All right, sorry to cut you off there, Corey.
No, that's good, that's good.
All right. Commissioner Kearney?
None.
All right, as, we will now, hearing none, we'll now move on to the resolution. Item nineteen B, resolution twenty dash twenty-three, resolution of the Los Angeles Hills County Fire District amending resolution fifteen dash six and seventeen dash eight and committing funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty to, and twenty twenty-one. I will now entertain a motion. Will the commissioner making the motion and the commissioner seconding said motion, please state their name for the benefit of the recording?
Price moves to approve twenty twenty-three.
Tyson will second.
Thank you. All right, the item is now open for discussion. Is there any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No discussion.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
Nope.
Commissioner Spreen?
No comment.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Yes, this is Alan Epstein, I'd like to comment on the items.
Just please, Alan.
Commissioners, of course, can commit funds for any purpose if they feel worthwhile, but I feel if they're going to commit funds, they should be reasonable amounts of monies and for reasonable purposes. I'll comment first on the wildfire protection technology, there's a one million dollar proposal. I don't see how it would be possible to spend one million dollars and the district has no plans to do so, and PG&E in conjunction with Alert Wildfire is installing cameras for free where they believe it is appropriate. With regards to the commitment for hydrants and infrastructure, the district has just completed replacing all of the five hundred and forty fire hydrants that it's responsible for. The estimated life for a hydrant is about fifty years, so it's highly unlikely that in the foreseeable near future, the hydrants will be needed to be replaced. The three million dollars for water projects is high question as to whether the district will be allowed to spend any money for water projects going forward, but, but none have been identified to be spent. As far as the six million dollars for the fire station, the fire stations typically have a fifty-year useful life, we're twenty years into it. The sinking fund would be an appropriate thing to do, but I can't see why it would be necessary to commit six million dollars at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. All right, we will now, there's no further discussion, we will now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct the roll call vote.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
President, or Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move to item twenty, the consent calendar. Item twenty A, approval of draft minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting, and item twenty B, received period report, eleven, May, twenty twenty. Are there any comments from the staff on these items? Any comments from the staff? All right, hearing none, would anyone like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Vice President Vaughn?
No.
Commissioner Tyson?
No, and I have no questions.
Commissioner Price?
None, no questions.
Commissioner Spreen?
No questions.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
No, no questions, and I vote yes, in case I have to.
Are there any public comments on this item? All right, hearing none, there's no further discussion, we'll now vote. District Clerk Vargas, please conduct a roll call vote.
Thank you. President Warren?
Yes.
Vice President Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Spreen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kearney?
Yes.
And the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item twenty-one, received dispersments for twenty twenty. Financial consultant Vargas, please share the dispersment.
Thank you, the dispersments are in front of you and I do not have any updates. We stand as is, that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from the commission? Vice President Vaughn?
No discussion.
Commissioner Tyson?
No.
Commissioner Price?
None.
Commissioner Spreen?
None.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Commissioner Kearney?
None.
Are there any public comments on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll now move on to item twenty-two, commission member report. Commissioner, Vice President Vaughn, commission member report? Anything to report?
Nothing to report.
All right, Commissioner Tyson?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Price?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Spreen?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Carr?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Kearney?
Nothing to report.
Are there any public comments on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll now move on to item twenty-three, adjournment. All right, folks, this concludes the June sixteenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Los Angeles Hills County Fire District. The meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-seven PM. The next regular meeting will take place via Zoom on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, at seven PM. Special Project Services Consultant Hendricks, please stop the recording.
Thanks, all, good night.
Night.
Night, bye.